So important for us and for the public.
And I think some people call the game and fish wildlife officers. So if we coordinate with that person.
Yeah.
He was very helpful when a deer had its demise in our backyard.
So just the Ohio Department of Insurance says that the average deer collision in Ohio costs about $5,000. So you think, I don't know how many of those strikes we have in Oxford. Again, $40,000 does not sound that bad. What am I to say?
Well, I think we should pursue this and bring something to us that we can vote on. And probably the sooner the better. Let's get it rolling. Thank you very much.
You'll do.
We appreciate all your efforts. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for the roll to be called, please.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Pitherich?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Snively?
Here.
If you'd like to join us, we're going to do a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Summit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any corrections or additions or changes? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda is approved. We'll move to public participation. And that's something we were going to talk about in our executive session, but we ran out of time. But I have had correspondence from two members from last year who are willing to do it again. And that was Jason and Mike. And is there, who was the third last time?
Chantel.
Chantel.
Chantel, would you like to do it again?
What is that?
This is the committee to look at the community assistance grants.
Oh, sure, yes.
Yeah, so I would entertain a motion to reappoint those three individuals.
So I would move that we appoint those three individuals with thanks for their service.
I would second that.
Okay. All those in favor of that well-worded motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, that is done. And we'll move to public comments. And at this time, we welcome comments from the public on items which are not on tonight's agenda, or if it's on the consent agenda, this would be your time. So come on up and tell us your name, where you're from, and we'll give you five minutes. Suzie.
Hi, Mayor.
Congratulations.
That's what I'm here to talk about.
Good.
I know. So Suzie Hummel, I live at 4689 Hickory Hill Drive. And I'm here to make sure everybody knows, we had a groundbreaking ceremony last week at TOPPS. And I'm here to thank everybody who was able to come and those who were with us in spirit. But we had Mayor and several council members, we had several staff here, Ann Fuer, Scott Webb. So we really had a great, it was a little hot and there were little bugs flying all over the place, but other than that, it was great. We had about 102 people, I don't know how Sherry got that count, but that's what she says there was, but it was very great. So thank you, everybody, for coming and for, again, supporting TOPPS through the years. And we, it's probably going to be about a 10-month building process. And then our, the board member that is in construction, who we are so thankful for, said we've got to give about a month for like, all the things that maybe we wanted them to do differently, and they did something different than what we wanted. And then a couple of weeks to move in. So probably next June or so, we'll be moved in, fingers crossed, but we are so excited. So thank you, everybody.
Has excavation begun?
I think it has. Have you been out there now?
Not yet.
Not yet.
But soon.
But soon. There's big, there's big pieces of equipment out there right now, so, yes.
Thank you, Suzie.
But thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Congratulations to TOPPS. And while I'm at it, I want to just also add my thanks to the people who've cooperated, the people who were involved, Scott Webb, the architect. I want to thank Ann Fuer, who pushed this forward. And I want to thank the Butler County Commissioners, and in particular Cindy Carpenter, for bringing that about and making the grants happen.
And Congress and President Biden for the Recovery Act dollars that enabled the county to have the money. So it was a good, it was a really feel-good event, even if it was blazing on.
It was. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Charlie Stevens. I come here in support of the deer management program. But I've been in town for 27 years, and I guess what I'm known for is I now work part-time at Ace Hardwood. If I was here talking about Ace, I would say keep as many deer as possible, because we sell an awful lot of deer repellent. But I'm not here in that capacity. I'm here as the co-president of Wild Ones. And our goal, Chantel, you were talking about increasing biodiversity, our goal is to increase biodiversity, and the way you do that fundamentally is plant, native plants. And it's the little guys, the insects, that make everything happen after that. If you don't have native plants, you're not going to have insects and on and on. And I come here in support of this proposition of deer management. I live in a township. And we had a meeting last night for Wild Ones that lasted an hour and a half. And in that hour and a half, there were 90, nine deers that came by the property. I'm a deer hunter. And if I had nine deers coming by my property, on the average of every 10, one deer every 10 minutes, my hunting season would be over in 30 minutes. And I would take two does and a buck, because that's what Butler County now allows you. And I think that's important to note. Butler County allows you three deer. That is a lot. And they want you to take doe first. And that's fundamentally, you know, demographics. You kill the doe. So I just want to talk in support of that, and I've got some notes, and I've kind of, you guys have already covered a lot of this. So nativizing is important. The reason that deer management is important to us is because deer will eat native plants first. As you guys know from talking with Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Gorchov, they will eat tree seedlings particularly before they eat anything else. But the deer population has gotten to the point, and there's fewer deer in a township, and they're much more skittish out there than in here. But they will eat native plants first. But there's so many deer now, they will eat anything. They will eat Japanese honeysuckle. And they will eat things they don't like, because they are starving in the wintertime. Wild Ones is having a meeting on an event at Plain Library on September 21st, Sunday, starting at 3:00, on having a conversation about deer management. We would like somebody from the city to be there. I've talked to Jessica, but she's going on vacation, fully understandable. I understand that a Sunday afternoon, if you work salary and get for five days a week, is, you know, a lot to ask. But part of our concern is focusing on Oxford, and most of our membership is in Oxford right now. So, and they're all talking about deer management, and what a problem deer is, and how many, how much it costs dead to try to plant native, and then you end up feeding the deer. So I just want to talk in support of that management program. You know, the hunters you guys are going to be hiring are, I wish I could shoot that well, but they're, that's what they're going to hit, you know. So I know that some people may have a problem with firearms in the city. If you can get doe hunters, that'd be good too, but I just want to say that I'm in support of this program, and Wild Ones would appreciate, you know, having our, you know, we can introduce, Chantel, you were saying, we introduced a predator.
No, I said education.
I'm fine with gray wolves and mountain lions around here, but I don't have a small dog, and I don't have to worry about it. But that's a lot to ask people to have cougars. You know, it's cougars, wolves, and human beings are the three primary predators of deer. And there are decreasing number of hunters, and there aren't any wolves or cougar around here. So there's limited alternatives to calling deer populations. So thank you all for taking this on, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. Hi.
Hi, I'm Barbara Smith, S-M-Y-T-H, and I live on Hilltop Road. I'm here also to request that the city adopt a really comprehensive and aggressive deer management program. This spring, I had a herd of 13 deer traveling through my quarter-acre lot on a regular basis. This summer, I have two does and their five fawns eating down everything. As a gardener, I'd say that the cost of deer grazing in my yard has been significant. I've lost probably hundreds of dollars' worth of plants over the years, and I spend money each year on chemical deterrents and temporary fencing. While I hate to lose my plants, my biggest concern really is deer's threat to our safety. As I was reading about this, many wildlife experts agree that the most dangerous mammal in the United States right now are deer, and in part because of Lyme disease and because of automobile accidents. OU researchers say that Lyme disease is a growing issue in Ohio, and if you look at the maps, you can see the occurrence of Lyme diseases moving towards us rapidly. I've had a personal experience with this, was actually treated for suspected Lyme disease this spring. And I'm sure I got that tick either right here in Ohio or certainly within Butler County. Ohio has had over 105,000 accidents in the past five years with deer. And 1,000 of those were in Butler County. And as an Oxford resident, we certainly know the tragedy of what those deer accidents can be. Finally, does with fawns are known to attack dogs, and I've had a firsthand experience with this. While walking along Hilltop on the road with a dog on a leash, a doe with fawns nearby came to attack the dog. Frightening enough, very frightening, that when it happened, I had two young children with me. And so, you know, you think that's kind of funny, that deer feel dangerous in that way, but female does really can be. Out west, actually, when we were traveling in Colorado, I expected to see signs about protecting your dogs from mountain lions, but the signs were about protecting your dogs from does. And I have a firsthand experience with that. So I, like many, really appreciate the beauty of seeing this magnificent big mammal around in nature. However, when we see it in Oxford, and the quantity that we do, it's not normal. It's not good for the deer population, and it's certainly not good for the safety of the citizens in our town. For all of these reasons, I support the city's plan and hope that you'll adopt the most aggressive and comprehensive plan possible to address this problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to address council tonight? Okay, thank you to everyone who did, we appreciate it. We'll move then to the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve it.
Summit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. And we'll move to resolutions, we have none. We'll move to ordinances, first reading, we have none. And so we'll move to second reading ordinances, and I'll let you read the first one.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of 4.9 acres from EVR Investments LLC for the Oxford Area Trails Multimodal Transportation Project, Phase Five.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Summit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
I have no changes from last time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Counselors, any last comments or issues? Call the roll.
Mr. Pitherich?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes.
So ordinance is adopted, and we'll move to number two.
An ordinance accepting the planning commission recommendation to amend 2.71 acres of the official zoning map at 6099 Fairfield Road from two-family residential district to multi-family residential district.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Summit.
Second.
It's also been moved and seconded. Hi, Zach.
Good evening. Good evening, counselors. In for Director Perry tonight. So this is the first of two ordinances for second reading. This is for the adaptive reuse project at 6099 Fairfield Road to convert to senior housing. And the only update since the first reading, to share, there's been a change to the ordinance to include an additional stipulation, mainly just for redundancy. This would be point number 12 on the ordinance, citing Oxford Code Section 1305.02, Chapter Three, Section 310 rental permits. Just emphasizing here that rental permits shall be obtained by the owner prior to occupancy. This is the only change since the first reading. Happy to take any questions.
Super, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Scott, you took your glasses off, I think, after coming up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's been, I guess, five weeks since you guys saw this. I just thought I would kind of remind everybody that, you know, we're trying to offer something that you have specifically asked for. We think this is a strong project, and just hope for your support. We have no issues with any of the conditions that have been brought forth by planning or the one that was added tonight, and look forward to being able to move forward on this.
Thank you, Scott.
And any questions, obviously.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, counselors, have any questions or comments?
I just, you know, for those people who weren't here five weeks ago, just a real brief synopsis, that this is, this first piece is a rezoning of the parcel. And I think our comprehensive plan would support a rezoning on its own, but the fact that this rezoning is tied to a particular development proposal that, you know, we're going to be talking about in a minute, I really think is, just as a safeguard against any kind of bait and switch, that's always a concern in the city of Oxford, is that you rezone for one thing, and then once you've rezoned, if something else could come in later. That's not the case here. So what we have is a very specific development proposal and a rezoning. Again, I think the rezoning stands on its own two feet, but the fact that it's tied to a development proposal with a lot of stipulations and conditions, I just think boosts the confidence level that the community will get the benefit of the rezoning. So I support this.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else? Call the roll.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitherich?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. And when you're ready, we'll read number three.
An ordinance accepting the planning commission recommendation to approve a preliminary and final plan development for senior housing at 6099 Fairfield Road.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Summit.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Zach?
So for this ordinance, for the same exact project, basically, the update is the same, it's the exact same conditions that are listed in the plan development.
Super, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, counselors, have any comments or questions?
I guess I just have a question. One of the, this, there were a certain number of waivers here, which is permissible within the plan development code, like, but one of the things that was kind of on the bubble was just the number of units. And I think we liked, I don't think we didn't, there was not really qualms about the, I think, you know, whatever it was, 44 instead of 42. But I guess the question was, is that there was some sentiment, at least I felt this, the hope that there might be some mix in the units, so they weren't all single bedroom units, that there might be some mix. And I know that you're not 100% in the design, but to ask the applicants where you are right now in terms of your mix of units, I think you had like, there was going to be like, all but two were going to be single, and then two doubles. Any chance that you might be able to mix that up more? And I think it improves your product. I mean, I, it's not a nitpicking thing from a zoning point of view, other than it, we are being asked to waive above what the code would permit. I'm just hoping to see the public benefit of the best project possible.
So, thanks for bringing that up. It is essentially, as I tried to describe in planning commission, this is sort of the result of the shape of the building. This ends up being the maximum that we can do. So we had some extra space that couldn't stand alone as its own apartment, so we threw extra bedrooms into some other ones, just to try to use up as much of the space as possible. That being said, marketing has really not begun, and the opportunity still exists to create more twos, you know, they're back-to-back single units. So if we find that the, when we start doing our pre-marketing, that the demand is up for two-family, or two-bedroom, we have that flexibility. So we asked you to just kind of consider this as the max we could possibly do, but we're certainly flexible on how the unit mix plays out.
Okay, that's just my last little push. I think it's going to improve the marketability of the complex overall, especially if people go through different life courses. But the, I want to here just thank Mr. Moore, who I know always does such great thorough analysis. So, yeah, otherwise, I think all the Ts are crossed and the Is dotted.
Okay, is there anyone else who has a comment or a question?
Do want a full status on the condition of previous fines and...
This is written into the document.
Yeah, I didn't know if we wanted to address that or just move forward.
Yeah, I don't think we need to talk about it anymore. I would say, to clarify, that my comment applies to all landlords. And I apologize to the Dudleys if it seemed like I was only picking on you. But I think that to the extent that we have a rental permit program, and it is part of the law of the city of Oxford, that landlords need to abide by it, and the city will begin looking at ways to enforce that.
Universally.
Universally, right. And I appreciate their willingness to put it in and make that condition available, so that everybody knows that they will be complying.
And that others should do the same.
Yeah, and others should do the same, exactly.
And it's for the safety of the tenants, is why these permits are even in place. So it should hopefully reduce liability for everybody and make it a safer environment for the people who live there.
I've been to a funeral from a, an apartment that burned and killed three students, and I personally do not want to attend another one. And I don't want any of my successors to have to attend one either. It's just about the safety of the tenants, and that should be our paramount concern. And parents of students who are moving in should want to know that their unit has been inspected, and it has smoke detectors, and that it is fully compliant with the city code. And I can't imagine, being a parent, I can't imagine that any parent would say, oh, we don't care about that, just let them move in. They want that. And we will be publicizing those that do. Okay, are there any other comments or questions?
I guess I would just thank the applicant for what appears to me a project that's going to address a fairly critical need here, for someone to be building, you know, 55-plus housing in what seems to me will at least be market-rate affordable, is for a structure that has sat vacant for how long now? I think this complies with the code, but it's also going to be a good thing for the city of Oxford.
Thank you, Dave. Are there any other comments? Are you ready to vote? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitherich?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes, ordinance is adopted. Good luck with your project. And we will now move to announcements and communications. I'll start with City Manager Doug Elliott.
Thank you. Right after our last council meeting, I got an email from the county administrator notifying me that the county is exploring relocating Area One Court from its current location. They released an RFP titled "Area One and Area Two Lease Courts Consolidation," and the proposals are due August 22nd, 2025. In that proposal, the county is seeking approximately 12,000 square feet in central Butler County, and is requesting proposals for the lease of turnkey office space. As you know, Area One Court meets here, and we've had a lease in place since 1995, 30 years ago. So the current building here is just under 4,000 square feet, and of course, it was built a long time ago in 1907, when it became a post office. So as I mentioned before, we've had a lease in place for 30 years. It's been at that same rate since 1995, which is $24,000 per year. Currently, the county pays all the court's operating expenses. And as I think many of you know, in 2017, the county prosecutor sought to transition the Butler County Area Court system into one that would be county-wide with two full-time judges. And of course, that didn't happen. He suggested at that time that Oxford should consider a municipal court, which would require the city to provide a judge, a clerk, staff, magistrate, and a prosecutor. We completed a study, had a study done for us by Management Partners in 2017. They looked at all available options, and we decided to stay with the status quo, since the prosecutor wasn't successful in getting his proposal adopted. Of course, that would have required some Ohio legislative action as well. This only requires the county commissioner's approval. So we'll see what happens. You know, JJ and I and the staff have talked about it. If it does happen, and I don't know for sure that it will, but if it does, we'll probably acquiesce and go to Hamilton. I don't imagine they're going to assume if we provide a proposal that we're centrally located in Butler County. But, you know, we would do that. And then we might look at options such as having a mayor's court with a magistrate. I can share with you, there are many cities that have a mayor's court, and Dublin being one, Dublin's over 40,000 population, they have a mayor's court with a magistrate. And so I know folks remember that former Supreme Court Justice did not favor mayor's courts for various reasons, because there's some small villages where the mayors actually preside over the courts. And so there were issues with that. But I think courts like Dublin, you know, do quite well. So we'll see. In her email to me, she stated that, you know, this is not, we're not notifying you that we're going to terminate the lease, but, you know, she will keep me posted, and of course, we'll be following it closely. And the last thing I wanted to share with you is that, as you probably know, the Ohio Legislature, they had had several proposals in the budget, property tax reform proposals, and they were vetoed by the governor. And of course, they met then afterwards and overturned one of his vetoes, and that was the one that would eliminate replacement tax levy. So that does exist. The other proposals don't exist. But however, they did include what's called a piggyback provision. And this law gives the county commissioners the authority to essentially double the state-funded homestead exemptions and the 2.5% owner occupancy credits for eligible property owners using local dollars to do that. So as you probably know, the homestead exemption shields the first $28,000 of a property's value from taxation. The homeowner has to be 65 years of age or older, permanently and totally disabled, and the income threshold is $40,000 for that homestead exemption. The owner-occupied tax credit gives property owners a tax break on the property they live in. So basically, that did stay in the budget, was not vetoed by the governor. So we'll see what our county commissioners do. They have three choices. They could fund the, this piggyback provision out of county funds, or they could basically state that it's going to come out of the local jurisdictions' pocketbooks, which would impact the school districts the most, then the county, and the townships, and then finally the city. Or they could decide to do nothing. And I think there was an article in the Journal News where one of the commissioners, Dixon, was critical of that and called it a sham. It's not really property tax reform. So we'll see what happens. But, you know, they're continuing to discuss property tax reform. As you know, I favor a property tax circuit breaker, and the governor appointed a commission, and a former legislator is on it from the Cincinnati area sites. And he mentioned that he favored a property tax circuit breaker. So we'll see what comes of this committee that the governor formed to discuss and come up with proposals for property tax reform. So more to come. Thank you, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. Hello, Michael.
Just a very quick update on some of our capital projects, I'm sure you're all interested in, as we come closer to a fall semester. It's Phase Five. Again, we've gotten a few million dollars in grant revenue from that, so thanks to Jessica and Scott Otto, our city engineer, for that. We've had our pre-construction meeting with ODOT and the contractor. They are ordering the long-lead items, such as the three steel bridges that will be installed on the project. One of them, a lengthy bridge going over the CSX railroad. That project's moving along, along with work at the Black Covered Bridge. The new siding is being completed. They're applying fire retardant on the structure right now, and our new roofing shingle system will be going up in a couple of weeks. The new water main on High Street... The new water main on High Street between Locust and Elm is substantially complete. We'll be reopening High Street either Friday or Monday next week. South Locust pedestrian improvements, that project is substantially complete. The new culverts are in, new sidewalks are in. The new pedestrian markings will be installed later this week. And we're waiting on some backordered items. The contractor is having some difficulty getting the rapid flash beacons for two of the new crosswalks that are going in. But we will expedite them as quickly as possible. And congratulations to Scott Otto for getting grant funding for that project. The city's funding about 40% of the total cost for that. We have 100% grant funding for six EV fast chargers. The city is ready to proceed. We're waiting for ODOT to give us the okay to advertise. They are very close because we're using toll revenue credits for the local match. That money has to be appropriated and encumbered before they'll allow us to advertise. We're getting very close on that. And also on our street maintenance program, we got rained out today, but we'll be back at it tomorrow. They should be completed by Friday with the asphalt work. Next week will be new street markings, new pedestrian crosswalks and signage. So all that work should be done in the next week or so. It's been a busy summer, but a good summer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, Chief Jones.
Love you, Mike.
Okay, Chief Dethridge.
Hello, sir.
Chad.
I have one announcement.
Okay.
Good evening, councilors. Mayor. You may or may not know that July is National Parks and Recreation Month, as was designated by the United States House of Representatives. So to celebrate this new initiative, the National Association of Parks and Recreation, or excuse me, the National Parks and Recreation Association, rather, polled lots of its members from across the country and wanted to survey what unique cultural and Parks and Rec-associated events you may do. So the Butler County Park District, Metro Parks of Butler County, actually coordinated this and reached out to several municipalities and agencies across Butler County. I threw a few things in the hat. And back on July 21st, the Butler County Order Park Commissioners did name the city of Oxford in a proclamation for RP Festival. So having nothing to do with the planning or implementation of that, I was very proud to accept such a nice proclamation from our Board of Butler County Commissioners. So just wanted to share those good news. Shows what great assets Parks and Recreation is to our families.
Thank you, Chad. Zach?
Lovely to meet you.
Okay, Jessica.
Similar to Mike, since we have a shorter meeting tonight, I thought I'd take the opportunity to share a few updates. The first is on our audio visual. Tonight is the first night of Ashley Keaton running the cameras. Thank you, Ashley. And then thank you to Heather, who will be taking over planning MBZA, and our team of the bench, if you will, for backups, which would be Kim, Zach, and Annie. So everyone got trained. I feel like we're in good hands. And so thanks to everyone for stepping forward when we had a need for the city. Under the category of housing, just a few updates. We're meeting with Habitat for Humanity on August 20th to talk about those, getting the infrastructure started, which is great. Behind the scenes, there was a big debacle with sewers, but we figured it out. The intrigue, the drama, it was real. But we figured it out. So I'm really excited about that. The development agreement draft has gone to empower me living for the Hester Road development. This is the nitty-gritty hard work. And I wanted to thank Jordan from Cool Law for his excellent draft and work on that. So we hope to kind of be moving that along. With the grant from Interact for Health, we have, TOPPS has hired a Housing Stability Coordinator, and they now have access to a legal fund. And then we also have access to an education campaign for tenant rights. So I'm really excited about this program. And stay tuned, we'll be getting, we're kind of hitting the ground running with this. Under Economic Development, just a thank you to Seth Kropenbaker for trying to keep jobs local. So he coordinated between Talawanda High School and Butler Tech to bring a new program to Talawanda to train healthcare jobs with Butler Tech certification to go right into our local hospitals, Knowles of Oxford, Woodland, all these local jobs. And they're piling in it in spring of '26. But it's been in the process for about 18 months. All these things you never, you know, you don't really hear about. And then art, we have our three garage mural finalists. That PACO will be looking at next week. And finally, our community assistance grant applications are due August 26. We've sent out a few reminders, but if you know anyone, please tell them to go ahead and get those in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Well, I think in Oxford history, August 5th, 2025 should go down as a momentous day. The last official act of complete Phase Five was done tonight. The agreed entries have been submitted to the court and are in the queue for final approval. And it's done except for the administrative part, just to get the doc, final documents signed, et cetera, et cetera. So that is fundamentally a remarkable accomplishment that there's so many people to thank for that. And well done for this community.
Thank you very much. Michael?
I just want to say, I took a look at the covered bridge last night. It looks fabulous, that cedar siding. You can smell it from probably 100 feet away. And yeah, I can't wait till they get the new roof on it, so it looks great.
An extra shout out to Seth for Red Brick Friday this week. It was really lovely. The library one is delightful. You can just go and peruse books and look at vendors. And it's very low-key, which is great. And just a really lovely community event. So the last one is the last Friday in August. So be on the lookout for that. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I feel like there's so much going on as far as like trying to get rid of property taxes. I worry so much about the schools and local governments. And sometimes it can feel like I feel very out of control. And there's so much. And having tenants calling me, telling me what's happening in their neck of the woods is like really devastating. Hearing people who are getting taken off the streets and kept in the Butler County jail is also very disappointing. But I think about, and even thinking about the deer population, there are so many more cases of Lyme disease than you can even imagine. And other types of tick-borne diseases too. We're actually keeping track of it just for the past few months. It's like a dozen, at least in the veterinary population. And so I always like to think whenever I feel really overwhelmed at the state of everything, I want to commend things like the tenants' rights. Like that is real tangible benefits to people who are suffering right now in our neighborhoods, only if it comes with enforcement. So whenever I hear things about like bills speaking up as far as rental permits, these are important. I mean, these tenants are struggling. So we need to make sure we're doing everything we can. And then as a challenge, if we think about, you know, why are all these tick-borne illnesses and flooding and all this stuff happening with sustainability and climate change? I just want to challenge us as a city or at our homes, what if we change the thermostat by one degree? What if we make it one degree warmer? You know, I'm sure the people who get cold might appreciate that. And the same thing in the winter if we make it one degree cooler. So I think that if we all try to do some simple things, that could actually make a really big impact on our energy use and maybe save the city some money. So that's good therapy for me, just having a nice hot house right now. Yeah, but thank you for the work you're doing as long as we're being creative and enforcing the good work and that it can, it will really make an impact on our neighbors.
Thank you, Chantel.
All right. I just want to second what Jessica said, really excited about PACO. We got, I think, 60-some submissions for the municipal garage from mural from all over the country. And so we're really excited to talk about our finalists and to continue to put Oxford on the map in terms of public art. So the next meeting is on the 11th at 5:30. But check the website to see where it will be, right? Okay. Did I say? It will be at the Art Museum, okay. So it'll be at the Richard and Carol Cox Art Museum, the Miami Art Museum. And then in praise of street resurfacing. So our street on Dana Drive just got resurfaced. And my husband kept sending me videos of like the trucks and the different equipment that was coming by. It was really cute. But what's even cuter is seeing all the kids riding their bikes. I didn't know, there were so many kids with so many bikes. They're just enjoying being on this newly repaved road. So thank you to the service department and all the contractors who helped to keep our city streets looking so good.
It was almost unwritable before, so that's great.
It's really nice.
Yeah. Jason?
Usually at this time, I have dour statements about the state of our state and our country. And that continues, and please, everyone, keep up that good fight. But I just want to take a second to like appreciate how awesome of a city and staff we have. Like if you just consider the things that we handle in every one of these meetings, the stuff that Mike, Chad, and Jessica mentioned, like how much good is being done for people that is above and beyond and just the normal functioning? It's amazing, and I appreciate it. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, and I hope we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm, we're going to get out of here early, but I just want to take a few minutes to share something that's, I don't know, on a little more serious note about some back and forth that communication, we've been having that Parking and Transportation Advisory Board and email that for those people. So there's this topic that we have in the city of Oxford called Complete Streets, which is, you know, as long as I've lived in Oxford, I was looking back at our comprehensive plan in 1998. It talked about walkability and bikability. And we have a 2008 plan that talked about walkability and bikability. And we have a 2023 plan that talked about walkability and bikability. It's always been something that's been super important to people in the city of Oxford. But when I moved to the city of Oxford 20 years ago, we really didn't have any bicycle lanes or bicycle infrastructure to speak of. There were places where we were lacking sidewalks. And in part because it's, there's like the goal of what you say you want to do, and then there's actually doing it, which is complicated, you know? But we've been making a lot of progress. And one of the reasons why we started, I started to realize like what was kind of hard was as in, on the Planning Commission, among other activists, we said, well, how can we start to move towards this goal? We've been talking about bicycle lanes and things like that for a long time. But it was one of those things that like we talk about sometimes, where it's like, I'm for this but for. And we would say, yeah, I'm all for walkability and bikability, but not if it takes away parking or not if it costs any extra money. So what's been taking time is to have that conversation, how do we right-size our values so that they, like what we do lines up with our goals? So just a little bit of history, and Jessica shared an email with me, but this is, you know, Doug and I, we've been working together on this for 15 years probably, going back and forth. But it's been a process. So, you know, forgive me a little bit of history. Our plans have always talked about that. But then what we did is we developed this pedestrian bicycle safety plan. So, okay, which quarters do we want to start working towards for things like having bicycle lanes or improved pedestrian infrastructure? We did that in 2014, okay? And the planner, I'm like, great, okay, now we have a plan, so it should happen. But implementing the plan, I came on council and we did a repaving on Sycamore. And at that time, the plan said, hey, we should have this like side path and paving program, didn't have any side path in there. And we said, what about the plan, what wasn't budgeted for? And so even, and then we said, well, maybe we should do bicycle lanes. And no, well, why don't we do a side path? And so in the end, we didn't get any improvements at all there. So even though we have this 10-year plan, we've made some progress. But the system, we thought 10 years would be enough to complete the system of bicycle lanes, and we've maybe like 30% complete. We wove it into a plan in our 2020 transportation plan. So again, we affirmed these values, we affirmed those plans. And in 2019, what we developed is this thing called the Complete Streets Policy, which is a kind of a, just for those people, it's a principle that a street, when designed, should afford safe and convenient access for all users of all ages and abilities, depending on, regardless of the mode of transportation. So it's kind of a value statement about that our streets are accessible to all. And it's a sustainability goal, and it's an ethics goal, a mobility justice goal. And so we've had this policy, it was adopted by council. And it's not a one-size-fits-all. It doesn't say a bicycle lane down every street. It just means each street should be safe and accessible according to the design standards as they exist. And there are a lot of good design standards about this. And so we've made a lot of really good progress. And it has never been easy when we developed these plans. And we did bicycle lanes on Spring Street. The joke Vince Hand was, it took 100 petition signatures per block of bike lane to make. Change doesn't come easily, you know? Especially when it involves trade-offs of money and parking. So we have really made good progress in this community when I think about it over the last 20 years. Like we were talking about the Oxford Area Trail, it was just a dream, and now it's happening. It's a much safer community to be a pedestrian or cyclist. And I think that's good for so many reasons. But there are times when it gets harder, okay? When you have to make a trade-off. And so what I was sharing is that on the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, we're starting to do some paving in neighborhoods that were not constructed with sidewalks when they were first built in the 50s and 60s. And so what that means is residents in those neighborhoods are forced to walk in the street. And I forgot to share that image, Mike, that I sent to you. And this is a really kind of a tricky one. So Optab recognized that, oh, the paving program is getting into some historic neighborhoods. Can show the image first of Ridge, it's on the other slide. And we on Optab said, hmm, this is going to be a thorny one, but we should anticipate this, you know, because this is our opportunity. According to the Complete Streets Policy, if we're going to pave a street, we should make it safe and accessible for all users of all ages and abilities, regardless of the mode of transportation. And we, and Optab sent a recommendation to the city council, to the city manager back last December that said, you know, that we, Optab recommended that the city commit to Complete Streets as part of its 2025 repaving, as part of the Complete Streets Policy by installing new improvements like sidewalks that are necessary, by either reallocating some of our 2025 repaving fund or committing to make the improvements as a several cap improvement within two years. So it's like, we have to, like, are we going to confide with our policy? And we recognize as the Complete, as the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, not all streets are created equally. Like some streets are cul-de-sac, they serve a few houses. And so is it a big deal that there's not a sidewalk on that street? But so, you know, but we do have streets like Ridge that provide access to multiple houses, and it provides north-south connection. And currently, this is what it looks like. And according to the repaving program, it will be repaved, but without any improvements. So the question that, you know, I want to raise, and, you know, I have to admit that I'm a nerd about this stuff, you know? Like when it comes to how to make streets equitable, like I write books about this stuff. I know the manuals. And so when I see us repaving the street and repaving it the way it's always been since the 50s, but without the improvements, I look at the design manuals and it says, no, a street like that should have a sidewalk. A collector's street like that should have a sidewalk on both sides. It's expensive, it's complicated, it's not easy. But the question that I want to just ask is, you know, it would be easy to skip the hard ones, but what do we do about those ones where we have a policy that says, and I won't go and bore you on the details of the Astrow manual or any of that stuff, but, you know, look at a street like this, and there's Jack Newell on a scooter. Would you consider a street like that to be safe for all users of all ages and abilities? You know, a child on a bicycle, a person in a wheelchair, a person on a scooter during daylight, a person on a scooter at night? But you could say, well, it's a local street. I mean, how many people are really going to use it? Can you go to the next slide there, Mike? You know, so not all streets are created equally. You know, I used to live on Devonshire, there were eight houses on there. But here's a street like Ridge that serves 26 different properties who can't get up to a sidewalk without going through Ridge. And because of our lack of north-south streets, there's probably 100 properties for which Ridge is the most likely and logical place to get from north to south. So if a kid on Fairfield wants to visit their friend on Contreras or walk, or someone's in a wheelchair, they're going to have to go up Ridge. So, you know, I guess my question for this council and for the city is that, you know, what is our commitment to the principles and the letter of our policy? You know, so the city's arguing, the city manager and Jessica conveyed that they're arguing that we're complying with Complete Streets Policy, that a street like Ridge is safe in accordance with the best design practices. I would, we could talk, quibble the policy, but I think we just need to use common sense. Like would you send your five-year-old down the street at night, walking in the middle of the street? So then the question is, what do we do about it? I think that the staff, I really appreciate that the service department staff has estimated the costs and that if you do everything, it's super expensive. But if you do sidewalks on one side of the street, it's less so. But I guess the question is, are we going to comply with our policy or not? And so, you know, we, so I can't design a street. I can push for budget dollars, but I can also legislate. And so I think that I'm going to be bringing forward some legislation that kind of brings that Optab recommendation up, which is kind of like we commit to complying with our policy, and then council can decide whether we support that or not. There is this exemption process that you can go through Optab to, that we're, Optab would say, no, this is a good exemption to the policy according to these standards, and we can decide on that. and we can decide on that. But the question is, it's a really high-level decision, you know, the policy. It's not an administrative decision, it's a council decision whether we want to waive our policy. So from that point of view, how serious are we about, if we have policies that we are kind of administratively willing to waive, how serious are we about the goals? And so I'm thinking, you know, in other communities, they do this by ordinance, which is just kind of, it says to the public like, hey, we're committed, like by law, we're going to uphold this standard. I just wanted to make people aware of it. We've had some internal conversation about that, but I just wanted to share my thoughts on why I think it's important and every time we miss an opportunity to improve infrastructure, it might be another seven years, seventy years, might be at least another 20 years before we paved the street. And how long is that for people in a neighborhood to not have access to safe and accessible transportation? So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dave. And I'm sure we'll continue that conversation.
Oh, and by the way, I wanted to convey, you know, all the stuff that we've done. None of that is to take away from all of the amazing stuff. So the policy doesn't say like, you know, it's, everything that has happened, all the stuff that we have done is wonderful, so it's not to take away from any of that stuff. But the policy does just not say is because you do something over here, it absolves you of your responsibility over here. Thank you.
Thank you. There are two comments I wanted to make tonight. One is to congratulate TOPS on their groundbreaking and I just think it's a marvelous project and I'm glad to see it get underway and I've already said my thank yous earlier, but I think they deserve a lot of credit. Also want to alert people to this weekend is the Back to School Bash. And that will be happening at the Aquatic Center and it's quite a big deal. I'll be there working part of it and they, now we have a large cadre of barbers and hairdressers to do haircuts for kids. There will be food, there will be activities, there will be swimming, there will be a lot of things going on and so if you have kids in the area, you might want to recommend that they take a stop at the Back to School Bash. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Same way. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Close. Meeting is adjourned, 8:25. That's good. Suppressors, is that what they call silencers?
Yeah. Not a problem. Because I'll have this one. Right. Yeah, I'm thinking we'll probably do that stuff. We have one pagers. It'll be, it'll be a set of, I do that and then I go select food. Throw it out there. That is an administrative appeal, so that would be.